Good evening. Today is August nineteenth. It is five thirty P M and we are having one of our regular work sessions. And we are going to be starting out with a city update from Mr. Brian McCain.
Thank you, ma'am. Just want to remind everyone that tomorrow at the Pueblo Airport, we're having the Essential Air Service Open House from one thirty to three for the public. We have five airlines that are applying for this. One is Advanced Air. They're proposing Phoenix to Albuquerque routes from Pueblo. Batique Air, which will go to Denver, Breeze Airways, Phoenix and Las Vegas, Denver Air Connections, which will go to Denver, and Sky West, which will also go to Denver. When they make this decision, the Department of Transportation really looks at community input, not only from the local government, but from citizens. So I encourage everybody to go out there and see what they have to offer. Make comments. If you want to submit comments to the city, just call the mayor's office or email us and we'll get those in. And you could also go to the Department of Transportation's website to submit that. The Pueblo Police Department would like to remind everyone that during the Colorado State Fair, keep your doors locked and remove valuable items from your car. Be aware of your surroundings, especially after dark. If you see something suspicious, please report it to the nearest local law enforcement officer, either the Pueblo PD or the sheriff's office. And there will be increased patrols throughout the area, including bike patrols inside the Colorado fairgrounds and outside. In the past month, members of the surrounding law enforcement agencies worked together to combat motor vehicle thefts. As a result, during five different operations, officers recovered twenty-two stolen vehicles, one gun, and made fifteen total arrests. Of those arrests, eight were booked and charged with motor vehicle charges, motor vehicle theft charges. Most of them also had outstanding warrants for their arrests. During the operations, they used the Real-Time Crime Center and its license plate readers and that technology to assist with it. And then just kind of a shout out to Public Works and the Park Department city staff. After the storm last week, we set up collection for tree branches and trees and Langone Sports Complex. They worked Friday through Sunday getting those together and people could drop them off. But the night of the storm, they were out there all night. We were driving around just looking for houses that were hit with trees, taking calls, and they they did a good job helping out the public during that storm. And that concludes my update.
Great. Thank you. Anything from council, President Aliff?
Yeah. What's the selection process for the airlines? I mean, I understand there's an open house, but how, what's the process for selecting the provider?
So they they go to the Department of Transportation, the Federal Department of Transportation. And what they do is they propose they want to go into a rural community. What it's made for the Central Air Service is to revitalize and keep rural airports going that may not have the traffic. So the airlines submit to it. And then Department of Transportation looks at their submittal, where they're going to be going, how many flights they offer. There's certain numbers that they have to meet, like so many flights per week or per year. I think it's ten thousand is the number that they have to hit. But where the public's comments come in, they really want an airline there that the public will support because they don't want to award the E A S service to, you know, an airplane that won't fly where anybody in Pueblo wants to go. So that's why it's important for the public to comment, not only from us, so we can write a letter of support, but also to the Department of Transportation. And then they have their people in D C that look at it, go through the applications, and they make their selection.
So that's what I was getting at. The the government selects the whoever's going to do it, not us.
Not us.
So we have a say so if we go out and we comment and things like that.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, you know, a letter from the mayor's office or the city goes a long way because, again, this is to enrich the community so they really listen to the local government of what they they want and what they'd like to see.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Flores?
Yes, you know, we have obviously a homeless issue and one of the big factors is really mental health. And there's going to be a a meeting this Thursday, and I wanted to announce that it's the Colorado Behavioral Health Administration. They're the ones that kind of are the go between the federal government and how the money and the federal money that comes into Colorado. They're the ones that have the contracts with the people that provide behavioral and mental health in our community. And so they are going to be here on Thursday. And I wanted the public to write this down if they're interested, because I think it's something that we really need to look at and find out how this works, because I, you know, it's it's part of the solution for that we have with the homeless is them providing, are we getting the right mental health support that we need? Obviously, as city council, we get blamed for everything, but there's a lot of money coming into this community for addiction recovery or behavioral health. And it would be interesting if anybody wants to go. It's it's called the Pueblo Community Conversation. It's going to be on August twenty-second, which is this Thursday, between five and six thirty at the Pueblo Community College Teaching and Learning Center located St. Mary Corwin Hospital. So it's 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 in that area that they built up for their nursing program. And that's it. I did have one question to Brian, and that is, what, you know, an airline service from Pueblo makes a lot of sense to go into connections in Springs and Denver. It sounds like that one airline is only going to Phoenix. Is that correct?
No, one of them is going to Phoenix and Albuquerque. And another one is going to Phoenix and Las Vegas. So Breeze Airways is going to Phoenix and Las Vegas. And Advanced Air is Phoenix and Albuquerque. And the rest of them are going to Denver, and that's it.
Okay, because I'm just wondering, I mean, whether that would even be why they're on the list if they're not going to go to Springs or Denver.
I I think, and I could share with you their proposals, and it's what they sent to the Department of Transportation. And they justify that. They do market research. They look at polling the citizens of Pueblo. And they they laid out, and if you want to see that, I'll send it to you.
All right, I would. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll get started with our first guest tonight, and that is our lobbyist from the Capital Success Group, Mr. Gil Romero and his colleagues Alec and Ryan. Good evening, gentlemen. How are you this evening?
We are great. Good evening, Madam Chair. Mayor Graham and President Aliff and members of City Council. It's so nice to see all of you virtually. And nice to see you back, Sarah. And obviously, we've not got a chance to meet Councilman Boston. We hope to to meet with all of you soon. We will be at the legislative barbecue on Friday. So if some of you are attending, we hope to to see all of you then and chat with you. I just wanted to make a point on what Councilman Flores said, and we we would love to come back and talk to you about a number of things that potentially could impact the local communities with respect to behavioral health and the criminal justice system. There's an interim committee that's meeting. I've I've had the privilege to meet the new commissioner, Commissioner Smith, that's leading the Behavioral Health Administration. She'll be down here on Friday. I'm going to, excuse me, on Thursday. I'm going to be there for that meeting. I I think it's really important for City Council and the mayor to to know some of the things. One of the bills that's going to come out of that interim committee this summer is a grant program, and I've been playing phone tag with Sheriff Lucero, because I think there's some opportunities for the jails to avail themselves of behavioral health services. Again, this goes to the point that Councilman Flores made about some things that we can do to to help when when these people have contact with law enforcement. So we would love to come back and at a work session to give you a briefing on that. But we're here tonight to talk to you about the special session. When we originally had planned this meeting, we expected to come and brief you on two ballot initiatives, fifty and one oh eight, that we thought would be very significant, would have incredible impact to the city Pueblo in terms of money coming to the city as a result of of property tax. But and we had we had been following the negotiation of of the parties involved in this issue. Advance Colorado and Colorado Concerned were the major, the main two proponents of the ballot initiatives, and they've been negotiating with the governor's office and the legislature on a compromise that would avoid those ballot initiatives going on the ballot. And we thought that they had reached an agreement. We thought that they were going to do it by memorandum of understanding, but that didn't satisfy the proponents. They wanted it in law. So the legislature will meet on August twenty-sixth for three days. This is the this is the second time in ten months they're going to try to fix this problem. Not only have they met twice in special session, but they also carried a bill, Senate Bill two thirty-three, which lowered property taxes. But that, the Advocates for Initiatives, one oh eight and fifty, said the agreement still didn't go far enough. So we will be following that session when it starts on the twenty-sixth. We will be providing you daily reports on that. We'll also be meeting with the Colorado Municipal League in terms of potential amendments. We don't expect more than one, two, or three bills. We don't have the specifics on that. We know that they're going to lower property tax, but, you know, the the big issue for local governments is the amounts that go to school districts that would, you know, if we, when we reduce the tax, that that has to be replaced by the state. And as you know, the state, you know, they did some really great things in the legislature legislature last year in terms of tax credits for families and and for childcare, that reduced the the level of income coming into the state. So they're going to have to do some balancing. So I think, and we're hoping that this compromise compromise will alleviate those two ballot initiatives getting on the ballot. With that explanation, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan Alec to give you some of the specifics. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Graham and staff. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Madam Chair, we sent a PowerPoint presentation. Is there any way we can put that up? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Gil covered. We can go to the next slide, please. So as Gil said, the special session will start on August twenty-sixth. It'll be at least three days long. The scope is very limited to property tax issues starting in twenty twenty-five. There's always a, there's always a pretty, a pretty thin scope on these special sessions. However, there's it's, they're still unpredictable and, you know, anything can happen. The legislators can be pretty creative with what they consider to deal with property taxes. So the the main point, like Gil said, is the the governor said he he won't sign a bill unless it results in initiative one oh eight and fifty being stripped from the ballot. So that could be one bill or a package of bills. But the the main purpose of this session, the special session, is to get fifty and one away off of the ballots. Next slide, please. And this is, this is just, we we wanted to share this slide. It's just a way to visualize some of the numbers. This is a potential starting point for the framework. All we all we know for sure is that it's gonna, it's gonna result in additional property tax reductions. And they're going to try to preserve education funding and minimize the impacts to local governments. This is part of the framework that they shared during their, the regular meeting of the Property Tax Commission about a week ago. And we we believe this is the starting point for the package of bills that they'll be working on during the special session. Next slide, please.
So next, we just wanted to highlight some of the more relevant ballot measures that you all will most likely see on the November ballot. Some of these have been referred by the legislature and others have been citizen initiated. The first one you see on your screen there, it expands the homestead property tax exemption to include veterans with disabilities and who are deemed individually unemployable by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. Currently, only veterans with a hundred percent permanent and total disability rating qualify for this exemption. So essentially, this just allows more disabled veterans to take advantage of this tax benefit that don't necessarily meet that hundred percent threshold. The second measure on your screen there, it introduces a six point five percent excise tax on the retail sale of firearms, firearm parts and ammunition. This revenue will be dedicated to fund crime victim support services, mental health services for veterans and youth, as well as school safety programs. They're expecting this to generate about forty million dollars in its first year. The third measure, this would modify if passed parole eligibility for violent offenders. Currently, all offenders charged with a violent crime in Colorado are required to serve seventy-five percent of their sentence before they are eligible for parole. This initiative would require offenders convicted to serve eighty-five percent of their sentence before being eligible for parole. The fourth measure is an initiative to establish funding for law enforcement. They're expecting about three hundred million. If passed, it would provide funding for law enforcement officer training, retention, and hiring, as well as expanding benefits for spouses and children of officers or first responders killed in the line of duty. Lastly, there's a ballot measure that would implement an all candidate primary and ranked choice voting in general elections for certain state and federal offices. So instead of party-specific primaries, all candidates would appear on a single primary ballot. And then the top four would advance the general election. And then in the general election, voters would rank their candidates by preference. Candidates would then be eliminated by round until one achieves a majority. So should the voters pass this, it would require a trial period in at least twelve different municipalities before statewide implementation, just allowing for audits and evaluations to ensure that the election system functions properly. With that, I'll turn it over to Ryan. He's just going to talk about the next slide, which just deals with looking forward.
Thanks, Alex. So between now and the next time we present to you guys, our highest priority will be covering the special session. We'll be down there at the Capitol every day, all day, and we will provide you with timely reports. As soon as they publish the legislation, we will send that out. And then send a detailed report on the results of the special session. Then during the month of September, on September sixth, that's when the ballot has to be finalized, so we will know exactly what initiatives are going to become measures on the November ballot. And then in the middle of September, on September nineteenth, we'll be covering the J B C quarterly forecast. We're not expecting too many changes from the June forecast. However, the the caveat there is, you know, what what happens during the special session. So we'll be, we'll be watching that closely. And then lastly, the we're we're still keeping our eye on on what's going on with the the closely watched races. And there's about, there's a handful in the House and the Senate. And we're not, we're not expecting anything too significant. We still expect the the Senate to be controlled by Democrats and the House. However, there are a handful of targeted races that House Republicans are looking at, and they're trying to to negate the the Democrats' super majority. So if they pick up, I think they they only need to pick up four seats. And then the the Democrats would no longer have a super majority. So we'll be watching that very closely. And with that, thank you very much again. It's a pleasure to be here, and we'd be happy to take any questions. And thank you, whoever's running the PowerPoint, very much.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Counselor Flores?
You know, there's been so many examples of what's going to be done on property tax. And I'm wondering, is there any way of making this simpler to the public by maybe using an example of a thousand dollars? Where someone that was paying property taxes on their home at a thousand dollars? What it would look like if we did nothing? If we, what it would look like if the special Senate Senate is successful? Or if it isn't, what it would look like if the two measures get on the ballot? Because they couldn't get anything done at the session. Has anybody done anything like that? Because most people can then figure out what they're really looking at. I have no idea, like in my particular case, you know, what the increase is going to look like once some of these measures are implemented. There's a question in there somewhere.
No, Councilman Flores, it's a really good question. It's a, I, we can send you some information. The the problem with this is, and it's, 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 it's obviously something that is not easily fixed. When you have to come back within ten months of a special session to fix it, and when you had an entire hundred and twenty-day session and a bill, Senate Bill two thirty-three, which they thought would do it, it, the the problem of the, the problem with with property taxes, there are so many moving parts, both residential and commercial, and then how they interact, the funding for school for schools and school districts and the, and and what quote was quote-called the backfill that the state has to do once these tax cuts are done. We we can find you some examples. What we, what we hope to do after the special session is over with and we have a solution, we would ask permission of President Aliff and Madam Chair to come back and and do such a a presentation for you to really go through what has passed in the special session and show it to you in terms of Pueblo demographics. You know, what a home for four hundred thousand will do, what it does to business property. Because that's really the only way you can really tell. That's how you'll really show the impact. And when you go out to your constituent well, forums and town hall meetings, you can take, you know, hopefully this one page, it may end up being two pages because it is complicated. But we'd like to take and overlay whatever is passed in the special session, and we hope when the special session is over with, we won't be talking about fifteen, fifty and one away.
At some point, I think the governor encouraged local county assessors and treasurers to to kind of do on their own by reducing the mill levy, which is, which complicates things further, because everybody has their own deal there. But yeah, if 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 there is anything out there that would simplify it, because I, it's really a difficult a difficult thing to figure out for people is to, you know, what they could save or how much they can expect as far as an increase.
Yeah. And then the other pieces of that are just some of the exceptions to, you know, just the percentage, you know, it's not saying, okay, I get it. I'm going from six percent to five percent. There are these other mechanisms that the legislature has put into law that help people with lower income so that they don't have to do that. So we'll try to, you know, we'll either look for something, but we'll either, if we don't, we'll build a construct so that we can come back. Hopefully, I know you all have a busy schedule, but we'd love to be able to come back in September and 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 put that together for you so that when you talk to, as I said, to your constituents, you'll be able to do, you know, at least a simplified version of what we think the law is now, or what the law will be after the special session.
My my last question has to do with, I didn't quite understand what the state is doing with ranked choice voting. What what is the intent there? I I thought communities always had that is an option, especially home rule cities, if they wanted to to have a ranked choice election. In fact, we looked at it, I think about six years ago, had several presentations on it, and it never went anywhere. But what what is, I didn't quite understand what the state is doing with that.
So Councilman Flores, this is a citizen-initiated referendum, so this isn't legislatively referred. But the arguments for this is that turnout is lower in primary elections and that voters who do participate are often the most partisan. Opening primary races allows more voters, greater participation in these elections. It allows them to rank multiple candidates, giving them more choice to express their their voting preferences. Voters are more empowered to give a top ranking to their favorite candidate while still supporting backup choices. On the other side of that, this makes election systems much more complex and expensive. Voters will have to vote in two different systems for each election. They might receive multiple ballots. There'll be a lot of voter education and outreach efforts, and many voters will probably be confused when they're filling out their ballots. So there's arguments for and against this proposition. We'll have a better understanding on September sixth when they finalize the signatures. For sure, whether this will be on the ballot, but it is looking more than likely it will be on the ballot.
And 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 if I could just add a tiny piece to your point, Council, Councilmember Flores, I think home rule cities and counties already have the ability to do this. This would be for the entire state, and it's, but it's just for certain state offices and federal offices. So, you know, it'd be for Congress members and and Senate. Nothing in the initiative as written has has to do with local governments.
Rank choice voting and open primary are two different things in my head. What are we, what are we talking about here? I think we're talking about an open primary system, or are we talking about ranked choice voting? To me, those are two different things. And maybe I I confuse myself as you explain this.
You're correct, Councilmember Flores. So it would be an open primary. And then in the general election, it would be ranked choice voting.
Okay.
So it would be establishing two different things.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Counselor Martinez, do you have anything this evening?
I do. Thanks, Councilwoman Street. Hi, Romero team. I'm so glad to see you, and I'm so excited to see you on Friday. A couple of questions. One, I'm curious if you've heard anything from our local delegation regarding their thoughts or feelings or plans for this special session?
To that question, no, we have not. Our our plan is to obviously meet with our local delegation. I don't think I, any of our delegation are carrying the any of the, you know, the three primary bills or two primary bills that will be introduced. But we will be talking to them on behalf of 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 the city Pueblo and City Council when the bills are introduced.
Um, I'd be curious to know what, you know, I guess as you're sending these daily updates during the special session, if you could include somewhere, like once you've had those conversations with our local delegation, I guess what they're thinking. So that way, if we need to, you know, step in with our local delegation, that would be helpful to know. My second question is, as these, you know, as the summer is kind of nearing an end and we're entering fall, and I'm sure legislators are preparing their five bills. If you guys have heard of any of these five bills yet that are going to be introduced January?
We are starting to hear a little bit, Counselor Martinez, we, you know, you know, they were very busy last year. I mean, it was, you know, there were a number of bills that were introduced, as you know, with respect to families, children, childcare, a lot of incredible work done around affordable housing. But there, you know, there, there still continues to be concern about access to homeownership. I've heard that potentially there may be some some bills that would be, it would be introduced around, you know, how, you know, whether it's, you know, obviously, the 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 amount that you have to put down. That it's pretty early, and we'll probably hear a little bit more about some of those things. I I know that the behavioral I, I know that the behavioral health interim committee is busy working on a number of criminal justice reform bills. So we'll see something around the criminal, criminal justice. The one thing that I, I'm glad you asked this question is that, that one of the things that the legislature would like to refer to the voters. If the, the republic, the Democrats get a super majority in the Senate and they keep their super majority in the House, is they would like to refer a measure with respect to Tabor. Because that really is, has been one of the, the things that, you know, both during COVID, even though we got ARPA money where there's, where the legislature has a difficult time where Colorado always seems to be a little bit better than other states and money and revenue coming in. But it's always the restrictions around Tabor that create problems for the, for the state. So that's one that I've heard more about. So we'll hear more. That's a great question. That's why we, we'd love to be able to come back in September and tell you what intel we've got. You know, one of the things we're going to do, even though there's only going to be three bills will probably be introduced. But it gives us, it gives us a chance to meet with the entire hundred legislators before the session starts. For it says, I feel like we're cheating. We get a head start to talk to them and we're going to be talking to, talking to them about some of the legislation that they're going to be carrying in, in, in January. So even though they're going to be doing property tax, there's about 70 or 80 members aren't going to be doing a lot while all of that's going on, because there's only two committees that will be meeting Senate Finance and House Finance. And so the other members will have to stick around and, and it's nice to see them when you don't have to write a check. So we're happy to see them in the Capitol because you can't write a check in the Capitol. But that, that will be doing some of that double duty when they meet on the 26th.
Okay. For the taper, is it a reform or is it removal of?
It's a good question. I, I think, I, I think they want to be, I, I think they want to be successful. I think the state still feels like, you know, there, you know, there, there's some level of, of, responsibility when, when there's language in the constitution. But it's also very, very inflexible, as you know, you can't change it simply with the change in the law. So I, 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 I don't know. I think there may be a couple of approaches to that, but I think one of them would just remove it as a constitutional provision.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
All righty, Mr. Boston, do you have anything? Okay, thank you. Anyone else on council?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the time. I know we went over.
That's okay. Thank you for bringing all that information to us so that we can be prepared to address it when it's time. And we will see you. Let's see, I do have an opening on September 30th. Shall we put you down for that? Because you know, it's budget season and we'll be reviewing the budget. So things are pretty filled up.
Thank you. That, that would be great. That'll, that'll give us some time to get some of these questions answered for you. And we'll be able to do a, hopefully a really good wrap up on the session and some illustrative material to make it easier for you to explain to your constituents. So thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Have a good night.
Have a good.
Thank you.
Bye bye. And next we have PPAL, which is Pueblo Police Activity, Activities League. And we have Deputy Chief Martin here, who runs that organization. And he's here to talk to us tonight about it.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Councilmembers, Mayor Graham. Tonight, I wanted to come forward and just kind of give you guys a brief history of the PPAL. We're in our 15th season. I know some of you might not be very versed in what we do and what we've done and the history behind us. So I just wanted to come in and give you a briefing. That was fast. So tonight we're going to do an overview of the Public Police Activities League. We focus on community building through sports and our origins are rooted in the police athletic league movement here in the United States. We have a very strong relationship with the Denver Broncos. They have a field grant program that focuses on community building through sports and infrastructure. In 2010, we actually, as the PAL, went forward with the Broncos and got a $250,000 grant in partnership with the city, which was used to build the Lake Minnetqua fields. The aim of the grant is to fund development and renovation of sports facilities in underserved communities and provide a safe, high quality space for youth to engage in sports and physical activities. We received the grant to enhance the fields. It focused on the construction improvements to the lake. And the, it facilitated the creation of a safer, more appealing environment for, environment for youth sports. I don't know if you remember Vannum Football, we used to play at Runyon Lake. That frustrated me all the time as a coach in that league because I felt football should be played on a football field. I like baseball, but football should be played where the kids can feel like they're playing football. The grant supported the construction of the fields at Lake Minnetqua with the support of the city council at the time and the city planning department. It included constructing the playing service with the grass. And it was a collaborative effort between the PAL, the Denver Broncos, Pueblo County, Southern Colorado Community Foundation and the city of Pueblo. And the biggest thing that the county helped us with is they helped us move dirt from when they were building the Thunder Bowl. We use that dirt as filter over at the fields and they really helped out. Of course, the impact on the community is that the field provides a central venue for youth sports and community events. There's been many races out there from running clubs, a lot of other events that have happened out there. So it's a great facility for us to highlight our community. It's increased the participation in our PAL programs. And it's helped revitalize some of the Lake Minnetqua area fostering community pride. I do know that Culvers loves our weekends when we have football out there. They get a lot of people that come into Culvers after and before the games. So it's helped us, the PAL, to bolster our ability to serve the community. It's given us enhanced facilities for more comprehensive programs. And it's provided a platform for positive interaction between youth and law enforcement. To date, I pulled the numbers and we have impacted over 6,875 youth in football, boys and girls, and over 1,046 in lacrosse, boys and girls since 2011 and 2017. We have an ongoing relationship between the Denver Broncos and the PAL. In the past, we've been part of the Denver Broncos Youth Football Task Force. And that's had many different changes over time, but we're still very involved with them. We ensure that we keep the field well maintained, accessible for the teams and for the community. We partner with Pueblo Parks and Rec. We go ahead and provide the paint that we use to paint our fields for the initial painting. We have Hawkeye strip, striping do the painting for us. And then Parks and Rec goes ahead and takes care of it. But we, you know, give them the paint and they use that for their flag program on Saturdays. And it provides a lasting benefit for the youth of our community. I'm kind of going over this again. So we were founded in 2009. Me and another detective who has since retired decided that we wanted to create the PAL again in Pueblo. We used to have a PAL program here in the past focused on boxing. We were football fans. We went ahead and filed for our 501(c)(3) through the IRS. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We model it after other PAL programs nationwide. And it was aimed at reducing juvenile delinquency and providing a positive interaction with police and youth. Currently, our board members are me, I'm the president again this year. Scott Valbush, who's a sergeant to the PPD. Adam Pickrell is an officer at the PBD. Javier Baca, who's an SRO at the PPD. Alaphar Garcia is a community member. Crystal Estrada is a community member. Monique Mulder is an officer at the PPD. Kennedy Garcia is one of our community members. And Dennis Ferbusch is a sergeant at the Public Police Department. In 2017, we added lacrosse for boys and girls. And we try to focus on underserved communities. We provide helmets and equipment to our players if they request it for a $30 fee. We did try scholarships in the past, but it's pretty hard to track those and identify who is available for a scholarship. So what we've done is we've done a payment plan. It's $10 a month for them to pay for the registration and use of the helmets. In the beginning, we went ahead and partnered with Rydell and purchased $75,000 worth of equipment to provide, provide a safe equipment to our youth. Helmets have to be recertified every three years and they have a 10 year lifespan. So after 10 years, you have to buy a brand new helmet to, to replace it or it's not safe. And we did, we do have an educational component where we expect our players to meet the educational requirements of their schools and behavioral requirements as well. We've had strong community support. We've had support last year from council where they provided a thousand dollar scholarship to Ron Colley for uniforms. Positive impact on reducing tensions between police and youth. You know, we've had a lot of players go on to play college sports in both lacrosse and football, join the military. And actually, we have several officers that work at the Public Police Department that were former players in the PPAL. And we do partner with local businesses, schools and volunteers. We have a good partnership with the school district. We play our middle school games at Ron Colley. So we get to use that field and we help the up, with the upkeep of the field. And we're looking at helping develop that field a little bit more now with Ron Colley being shut down. So recent developments, we're continuing to grow and adapt to our community needs. I don't know if you know, but flag football will be a sport in the 2028 Olympics. Chassa has sanctioned that as a girls' sport this year in high school. We are partnering with Parks and Rec to do a 20, 24 girls' flag football league in our community. And we also look to collaborate with other organizations to broaden the impact that we have on our community and our youth. Challenges really is resilience is the closure of schools and the evolving community. So closing the schools has really impacted our youth middle school football program. At one point, we had seven teams. This year we have four teams. So it's really difficult to work and have the teams play, you know, different competition. But we're going to make this season move forward and then we're looking at restructuring our middle school league and maybe branching out and playing some other leagues across Southern Colorado. As a, as a boon, September 28th, our eight U, so I should tell you what we have. We have eight U, 10 U, 12 U and middle school. Our eight U teams, we have four of them. They're really small and they're kind of fun to watch. They're going to go up to Folsom Field and play at CU Stadium on that Saturday. They're going to have their games there at two o'clock that Saturday and they get to play on Folsom Field. So it's going to be a good experience for our AU players. It's a continued success and a vital resource for our public youth. And we have strong community and law enforcement support in our program. It's been a passion of mine since we started it. Again, I've been doing it for about 15 years. It's a great program and we really, really enjoy it. Currently, our football season started this past weekend. Our championships are going to be held October 12th and 13th at either Dutch Clark or the Thunder Bowl. Middle school games are played at Ron Colley on Saturday mornings. Our eight U, 10 U and 12 U are played Sunday mornings at Veterans Memorial Park, Lake Minnetqua. Our lacrosse program is a spring sport, so that'll be in the spring. And again, like I said, we're currently researching the best season to hold our girls' flag football program. So if you want to come out and watch some football, Saturday is the middle school. They're a little more competitive. And Sunday at Lake Minnetqua, we'll have our, our teams out there. So if you want to stop by and watch your kids' players say hi, we'd appreciate it. Conclusion, we really, really hold close to our hearts our, our role in fostering trust and community cohesion. We have an ongoing commitment to youth development and we're continuing to explore other further programming in our, in our league for the future. And with that, I hope I kept us on time. And if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions or comments from council?
Gee, I'm having been an athletic director myself in the metropolitan area of Denver, involved in coaches and with Chassa. I think, I, I don't know if the people understand, Chassa is a Colorado High School Activity Association. They control and, and determine the legislation for athletics as it relates to all the high schools and secondary schools in, in the state of Colorado and middle schools, et cetera. So they're playing a role and you're working with them as it relates to this flag football.
Yes. So the Denver Broncos partnered with Chassa to get girls' flag football sanctioned. So when, in our football league and our lacrosse league, we use Chassa rules and we use Chassa referees. In the past, the referees that were used for youth football were usually basketball players hired from the college to make some extra money on the weekend, which did not, it was not good for, for the game because they really didn't know the rules of football. So we went ahead and got with the Chassa referees here in Pueblo and we worked with them and contracted them to referee our games. They also use it as a training ground for their new referees. So we follow all Chassa rules in both sports and we'll be following Chassa rules for girls' flag football.
And I also understand that you're, as, as my understanding based on your, your commentary and your presentation that you're not using Runyon anymore for, for football. Is that right?
Right. We haven't used Runyon for football for, since 2011, I believe, 2012.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Gomez?
Do you utilize a sanctioned police athletic league process?
No, we're, we're, we're not sanctioned through the National Police Athletic League. We base it off their model. So we're a nonprofit. We are not connected to the police department. We use the police department's name and name only. Many of the police activities league across the nation are sanctioned through their departments, but they, they also have officers assigned to that role. We don't have the staff to do that and we didn't have the staff to do that in the past. So we went ahead and developed as a nonprofit. We are 100% self-funded through registrations and sponsorships through the, the community. And that's how we decided to, to develop the league.
I'm sure it's a great program. I, I grew up at Police Athletic League in New York. And this has been going on for decades now.
Yeah.
So there, so I'm sure your program's just as good, but I'm glad you guys are doing things like that.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores?
Did you say that when they raise Ron Colley, the Ron Colley Middle School, do we lose the field out there?
No, the field is going to be there still. And they're going to leave it for use of the community. What we want to do is, is we want to make sure we can help develop and make the field better. You know, a lot of our coaches do other things in the community. And we have a lot of coaches who want to donate in kind to help fix scoreboards, you know, help with the grass, things of that nature. So we're going to have the field still and we're looking forward to making it look better and better.
Yeah, because I live in that area and Saturday morning during football season, the, I mean, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
They, you know, they, they fill the bleachers and lots of teams play out there.
Yeah, it gets pretty competitive, especially in the middle school league.
Going back to Lake Minnetqua, we have a field there now that, that was funded several years back. But I'm not sure that fishing is a sport, but it really seems like we're missing a potential with Lake Minnetqua. I know that it's full of silt. And I had, I had talked to Stephen Meyer about borrowing a silt remover that the, the steel plant actually owns for the lakes they own, the Finn and Feather Lakes and up south of here. And, but it just seems like that would be an activity if we could. I don't know, would you rehab that lake, rehabilitate the lake? Because it's, it's, all it's doing is lots of, you know, plants are just over growing the thing. And, and the silt has built up to the point that if you walk to the middle of it, you'd still, your head still would be above water. But I don't know, this, is this outside of maybe something that you could be doing in that area? And I, I'm just thinking about simple building of piers. If we could make the lake more inhabitable and stock it with fish that our, our kids could learn to fish out there.
Right. I, I haven't had those conversations with Stephen. It'd be interesting.
It's just a thought and you know, maybe the first thing would be to, if there's a way of providing just the funds for planning of it, having somebody that, that knows what needs to be done and asking them to do a full scale plan of some sort, just to look at the possibility of restoring the lake.
Definitely.
Then the last thing I had was, let's see, I had written this down. You know that CSU Pueblo did away with lacrosse and I, I tried helping them. And at the end of the day, it all was a financial situation. And it, it just, I don't know, with kids, it really, it just seems like it's getting more and more popular at a younger level. But I was disappointed that they shut that down. Do, is there, are there programs? Because you mostly deal with middle school or do you also deal with high school?
You know, we, we try to work with the high school. I know in the past, we, we have worked closely with, I actually coached the Pueblo West High School Lacrosse Team for a year. My son actually played college lacrosse. I love the sport to death. I think it's amazing. But you know, we do work hand in hand with them because we're a feeder team into them. Because we're the only feeder team in Southern Colorado in Pueblo for Pueblo West High School Lacrosse. The program has a lot of potential. The sport could really grow in this community. We've worked really hard to try and grow it. We just need to do a little bit more work on that side to, to get it more. We've worked really hard to try and grow it. We just need to do a little bit more work on that side to to get it more valuable for the rest.
Yeah, along from closing or, you know, eliminating lacrosse. They kind of destroyed the league they were in too, in that that at one point I think they had six teams and they may be down to four. So I'm really worried about what's happening at the college level and where we would feed our kids.
Right. And that's a that's a concern we have. I know when they, when I heard them talk about closing the program, I knew it was going to have a an effect on our high school team and our feeder teams. It's huge in Denver. Lacrosse is one of the biggest sports up there. You know, you have DU who won the national championship several times. So I think looking at our programming, trying to grow that sport is going to be one of our priorities.
I think the issue at CSU Pueblo was just transportation to the other spots. Because you figure it's really not that expensive of a sport. You're you're playing on a soccer field that's already built. And it just seems like it's the, you know, the the equipment that they wear. So I never understood the financial question and but I mean, that's their decision to make and I was disappointed that it's gone now.
I was too.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flores. I have to giggle when you say to to remove the silt from the lake because I just think that's Pueblo's folklore out there, right? Isn't like Jimmy Hoffa and Dave J B D Cooper supposed to be out there? And who knows what else? You know, thank you for taking your time out of your, just your regular day, your profession. I mean, that is all consuming at this time for all the police officers in this community and for them to give their time to the kids. I can understand, you know, keeping that relationship with the kids and trying to reduce the crime, trying to reduce the recidivism rate around here, all of that, you know. I just commend you for that because I know that you have enough stressful day job as it is. I think even me as a grandparent, going to all the sporting events can be time consuming, much less running a whole program, you know.
Yeah, thank you.
So I just wanted to commend you and your officers who are involved in that. Thank you very much for going above and beyond and contributing your time to our community.
We appreciate it. We really do. And when we go to work and we see the the two officers that played, they actually played for me and they're putting their uniforms on and coming to work, it's it's pretty fulfilling.
Oh, so it's good for recruitment too.
Yes.
Counsel, Counselor Boston, do you have anything?
Yeah, I was actually just going to bring that up. I'm pretty sure when I did my ride along a couple of weeks ago, I met one of those officers who said you changed his life through that program and I'm pretty sure he's on the on the staff with you guys now. So it's really cool to hear the impact that it's having, getting the youth involved like that and providing opportunities for them. Another question I wanted to ask was I had an individual reach out to me who does, he has a gym where he does some extra extracurricular activities like this. And he was trying to figure out a way to provide after school programs. I didn't know what your guys' limitations are on what sort of sports or activities you guys can get involved with. But he was wondering what avenues he could take to help provide programs for kids in the afternoons. I didn't know if you were a person I could connect him with to see if maybe his gym could be added as a potential new outlet for kids to do an after school program at or not.
Yeah, definitely. We're an open book. We can pretty much do anything that is sports related or actually after school related. So please connect him with me. I would appreciate that.
Okay, sounds good. I will do that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Martinez, do you have anything?
I don't. Thanks.
All righty, if that's everything.
I'd like to say something.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I remember growing up. Jim, I'm gonna call you Jim. We had the old timers program here in Pueblo. Okay, hundreds of young people, young men at the time got involved. There wasn't softball for the for the young ladies and there is now. So the more we can do for the young people in this community, the better off this community is going to be in in a number of ways. And so I I want to commend you and and the department as well. I want you to know that I will personally help you in any way we can. And I think Chairman Maestria, Chairwoman Maestria said that it's pretty much indicated that as well. I think the city council is and I'm not speaking for all them is is behind everything and the mayor is behind everything that you're trying to do to help young people because that's what it's all about. They're the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Deputy Chief Martin, you know, council has our contingency fund that we help the organizations and, you know, it's always good to give money towards things that help children in this community. So if you come up with something, let us know.
I will. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. And next, we are going to be talking with Chief Huber of the Fire Department and her 2025 budget. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of council. I brought along Deputy Chief Keith Novak, in case you haven't met him, Mayor.
Good evening.
All right, make sure I can operate this. All right. So this evening I'm going to be talking about a couple of things. First, I'm going to be talking about some staffing changes and some ordinances that are become becoming your way in September. It's exciting times for the Fire Department. We've got a lot of growth going on, both with additional stations and changes in positions. And then after I explain those changes for that ordinance, I will be going over our budget requests. So currently, you can see the locations of our fire stations and on the northwest corner, we do not have any fire station. So it's a significant drive for any station to cover that territory. The map on your left demonstrates the current coverage of the current fire stations and the map on the right is the future coverage in about a less than a year with the new fire station over on 24th and Perry. So with that, we're going to have to add some personnel to staff this company. And so each company has three shifts, an A, a B and a C. And each crew has three personnel. So anytime we have to staff a position, we're basically asking for three. This slide right here demonstrates the current span of control or the number of people that an assistant chief has to manage on any given day, and that's on the far left. If we do not add an assistant chief to our staffing ordinance, the middle graph demonstrates the span of control or number of people that they'll have to manage in the future. And one of the requests you're going to see in the ordinance is to convert a firefighter position to an assistant chief position to create a more manageable span of control or supervision. That improves the safety of the crews and the community. With the changes we're asking for, we are relocating Station Six in a new, one of the new stations, but that is not going to be any additional personnel. We're relocating Station Eight. Again, there's no change to personnel there. And then we are staffing Station Eleven. With that, we are expanding a second truck company with the engine company. You will see the ordinance next month and then possibly before the end of the year, a second ordinance for the final three conversions. And then in my budget request for 2025, you're going to see a request for the final six positions for Station Eleven. So these are the phases that we're in. So right now we're looking at phase one coming up with eight vacant firefighter positions. Now, these were restaffed over the last couple of years to allow for training and I'll cover the reasons why later. Of those eight positions, three will be converted to assistant chief positions. And five will be converted to fire lieutenant positions with one additional adding of one lieutenant. Phase two, through the attrition, will create three more firefighter vacancies and those will be converted to three engineers, hopefully by the end of the year. And then again, we're asking for six new positions for the new fire station for the 2025 budget. This is kind of just a graphic to show you the cost of converting a position at this point. We are using salary savings to cover these costs, so there will be no additional budgetary ask for the rest of the year to cover these positions. I'll give you a second to look at it. We still will have anticipated salary savings of $210,000. So part of our budget asks is phase three, which will be for the 2025 budget and that'll be for the three captains and the three emergency medical officers that will be at Station Eleven. And there's a total cost to that of about a million dollars. Excuse me. So why do we bring individuals on early? Well, it takes time to train the individuals, get them through the probation area period, get them proficient at the job and also to put them through paramedic school to allow for the opportunity for these promotions. Attrition takes some time, academies take some time, so it's a timely process. The only unknowns we don't know right now is a possible early retirement, either through medical or just decisions. And the time it takes generally to bring somebody on from the time of the interviews, about three months after background checks and things like that. All right. And now I'll cover our asks for our additional ask for 2025. As I spoke to before, with six full time employees, three captains, three M O's at a cost of one million plus. And this is all for Station Eleven. The additional cost that I've asked for is in capital improvements to have the design architect funded for Station One, which is going to go down on Santa Fe in Ilex at a million five. We have some high equipment costs that we need replace. The cardiac monitors that we have are aging out and so we're asking for $700,000 on that. We're waiting on a firefighter grant to see if maybe it'll get funded that way. But if we do not get that funding, it's it isn't asked in this year's budget. And then we still have to continue to upgrade the older stations to include moving the PPE out of the truck room, creating some workout spaces and privacy and things to that nature. So we've asked for some money to continue to do that. And I know I had 45 minutes, but that concludes my report.
I'm Chief Huber. What is your total budget then for 2025 in comparison to 2024?
The total budget ask, because most of those are capital improvements, so that's separate, is 26,000 more than the budget this year. And the million dollars for the salary and the 26,000 is to cover the additional utilities and fee costs to have another fire station.
Okay, so you're saying that it's 26,000 plus the million.
Correct.
And then on your capital improvements, it's another million.
It's probably close to two.
Oh, that's right, because it's 1.5 plus all the
The 700 and then about 250 I've asked for for each first station improvements. And I'm going to ask for that each year so that we can focus a project a year for each station.
So it's more closer to three then, because it's a million and a half for design.
So two, two and a half, yeah.
700. And then how many fire stations do you have for remodel? You said 250 apiece.
Well, not, I'm going to do like one per year. So 250 ask per year to to work towards that goal so that it doesn't put all the focus just in one area.
Okay, I got you. All right. Any questions from council?
I have a question.
Counselor Latino.
Thank you. Chief, I I've mentioned this to Chief Knoller. But in other other parts of the country, they have combined fire and police stations. It's time for Pueblo to come into the 21st century as relates to law enforcement. And I would hope that somewhere along the line, we can get the police department and the fire department together and 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 have substations in the four quadrants of the city. I think it's time. But the things that are going on in this community, I have real concerns about the safety and the security. You you folks are doing a great job and so is the police department. I have no complaints as it relates to the work that you do, but I think it's time because of the things that are going on and where we are with crime in this country and in particular in the city that we we take a long, hard look at substations. Thank you.
Hi, Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, what processes do you use in reference to getting information for a counselor? For instance, if I just had an issue and I want to put this out front, being in law enforcement for a long time, I consider the people in the Fire Department, my brothers and sisters, just like I do with the Police Department. I have a lot of faith in the rank and file, not so much for the administrations and I'm concerned that I recently went there for a demolition list from the the department and I asked him specifically and I was referred to utilize Cora or utilize the Freedom of Information Act. Now, I'm not sure, I'm pretty sure that's not coming from the rank and file. And I want to know, is that the process that we can expect to utilize when we call for information that's simple and basic as that? That you're going to refer me or I don't know if anybody else has gone through this to utilize Cora?
I could take that one, Counselor Gomez. As you know, that we've had this conversation several times, if you are to request information from any of the departments, you are to do it through the mayor's office. And the information that you specifically requested most recently, you had also requested it in May, excuse me, from Deputy Chief Harner and he had already provided the information to you. So I have recently resent it to you in an email and the information you requested.
Just so we know, when I contact the Fire Department or the Police Department and I talk to them, this, for lack of a better term, this mommy may I process that we have is really slows down progress because sometimes when you're trying to contact the department head, they may be on vacation, they may be someplace else or you want to talk to somebody at second command. The information that I want, I move on a pretty quick schedule. And I move progressively. But to have that stopgap measure put in there, because we have to contact the mayor's office for that kind of mission is so outdated. If I'm asking for information that's basic that you should give to the citizen, if I'm not giving a directive, I got it.
The only way a citizen is going to get that information is if it's corred, so.
This, so if they wanted to get information like how many homes need to be or have been burnt out shells and are set for demolition or how many burnt out homes do you keep track of? Is there a database? That's a simple question. And I couldn't get an answer. And having to jump through all these hoops and obstacles handcuffs me when I'm trying to work with my constituency and give them information that should be readily available to us. That's just my complaint. It's so bizarre and backwards here on what we have to go through to get information. I contacted Colorado Springs and what they have, unlike us, they have a system set up where their council people have one person assigned to each one of them to get them all the information almost immediately. Not waiting. And if by the end of the day they don't have it, they feel there's something wrong. They even have a legislative person directly supporting city council. We don't have that here.
Yeah, you don't have it because you didn't want it. It was put in your budget this year for admin.
I agree, but I I would love to see that administrative person because we already got the money allotted. We need that more than you can realize. But if there's something that's going to be handcuffing me or it's because I'm asking questions, to go through this constant, I'm not going to go through it.
It's not made to handcuff you, Counselor. It's made for you to get the information quicker. The faster you contact me, the faster I know who to contact. You yourself has said you're a new counselor, only being on the job of eight months and you don't normally know the right channels to go to and who you should contact. If you contact me in my office, we usually get it to you by end of day.
I'm learning things that I'm trying to pass to my constituents, what takes so long? Because try to get ahold of public works, try to get ahold of region. I mean, it's just one thing after the other. If you have a department head. Now, people don't know this either. I'm going to share it with you. We have department heads that truly have are embedded in this community in this community and they're doing the best they can. But when you have staff that's been there 25, 30 years, they control the flow of this city, whether we like it or not. The mayor and we may have control in some areas, first strings, the executive branch has theirs. But when you go and you're looking for help, you go to the department head and the department head makes a decision. If I am asking for information that comes out as a directive where I'm going to take up staff time, I got it. I don't want to do that. But when I'm asking basic information that you should provide to a citizen and you won't give that to me, there's something wrong.
That's why you cor it.
Excuse me?
That's why a citizen would cor it.
I was told when I went to the city clerk's office that the core request is going to be $41 an hour and I'm liable for it.
It's not. It's after how many hours, Benny? After one hour.
Okay, one hour is free, but why am I paying $41 an hour after that? Because I do a lot of research, as you can tell. Why am I going to be liable for $41 an hour? I don't understand that at all.
Again, Counselor Gomez, just like any of the other counselors, when they need information, they contact my office and my office gets it to you. That is the protocol. That is my policy and that is how we will continue to work. That is what the department directors have been told to do. So if a director is not responding to you, That is what the department directors have been told to do. So if a director is not responding to you, it's because I've asked them not to respond to you.
Why do they call you and tell you that I'm doing something like asking for a directive?
They do. And then you and I have had the conversation several times about going to the police department, going to the fire department, going to public works, going to IT on occasions when you have no appointment and nothing has been set up, or you're looking for information and you can't get to it. Again, if you contact my office, we will be more than happy to get you the information or point you in the right direction.
We just don't agree. I don't work for you, Mayor.
I never said you did.
I work for my constituency, okay? We're on a hopefully on a same footing. Okay, and I work for the constituents, and they want questions answered. I try to get it as quickly as I can. But sometimes I feel I'm getting intentionally railroaded because I bring this kind of stuff up. It's not to be mean. It's not to be critical. All I want is honest transparency that's in everything that we do. That's all I want. I don't know what to tell them. I can, well, did you find out anything? No, they're going to get back to me. Wait three days later, I might get something if I'm lucky. Why are we going through the step of having to go through you on information requests? I got the directive. But your department head should contact you and say Gomez is out there doing it again, and he's trying to give us work to do and directive. They don't even know what our process is here. I got that. But that step that we have right now has got to be changed.
The agenda item is the fire budget.
I'm getting there, Counselor Martinez. Thank you. I was waiting for a break here in his way in his what he had to say. So he says he's done. Counselor Gomez, if you have an issue in regards to this, which is not here part of the agenda, then you can ask that we have, well, the mayor has meetings. She offers meetings in her office. If you want to bring it to the public, we can do a work session and ask for to schedule a work session. But we can't take up the time of the chief because and her budget request, because it has nothing to do with the topic that we're discussing tonight. Okay, um. Counselor Martinez, did you have something that you would like to ask in regards to Chief Huber and her budget?
Thanks, Chief, for I'm for that presentation. This is this will be my first budget. This is my first budget question out of this, the next fiscal year. So I'm good for you that you get it. I'm curious about, so you know, as we're building new fire stations, did you allocate any like for equipment or trucks? Because I know the last time we spoke, trucks are like on a three-year waitlist kind of a thing. That's probably an overdramatization, but any what about anything like that?
That's a great question, and yet unfortunately, it is a very long wait for a fire truck these days. I think some of the average number of days is 800. But the truck that will be going into Station elevens is already on order, and I hope that it shows up about the same time as the doors open for that station. If not, we do have spare vehicles that we can use until it does show up. Did I answer all your questions?
Yeah, that was, no, that that was good. Thanks.
Counselor Boston. Anyway, Counselor Flores.
I just wanted to be sure I understood this, your conversion of firefighters into promotional positions. Does that mean we'll have less firefighters at each station, or does that just mean you'll have firefighters that have a higher title?
That's a good question to clarify. So we will have more personnel, but there will be more promoted positions. But our baseline number of firefighters will be lower because we raised it to create the training opportunity for this conversion. So there will be the same number of firefighters that are normally on the apparatus, and then the rest of them are going to be converted to promotions.
I'm assuming that a lieutenant, if need be, he would he would be there fighting the fire also, right?
Yeah, there'll be a worker bee for sure.
Right, right. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because it was kind of.
Yeah, for each, for example, a lieutenant position is a supervisory position that will be on the trucks. And for they've not not had those positions on the trucks, but as we expand the department, they're in what we call high-risk, low-frequency, so the training and the supervision is critical to the safety of the community and those personnel.
Your term that you use, conversion of five vacant firefighter positions, does that mean you have to wait until it becomes vacant before you can promote that person to a lieutenant or an assistant fire chief?
That's 100% correct. So yes, it's a it's a timing thing. The position has to be vacant for us to be able to convert it.
So but we're still training people on the backside.
Yes, we have four individuals in paramedic school right now. We have three that are completing. And we're getting ready for hopefully Academy in January with all this attrition.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, thank you.
And so Chief Huber, all your brass probably it comes from promotion within?
Yes.
And then so you'll be hiring basically the crew firefighters in order to fill the position so that you have enough for every station. And all the new hires aren't necessarily going to Fire Station Eleven. They would probably, are they going to be mixed within the city? So it doesn't have like a whole new fresh crew?
Right, so they will be everywhere.
You know, new, all newly experienced, all new in their position, but not with that experience.
No, that's great, because I mean, I don't think most people know how we function, but yes, when we bring on new firefighters, they go through a one-year probation, and during that time, they definitely spend time with almost every station, training and learning the different jobs, whether it be a medical officer or an engineer. And so they could be at any station at any given day gaining experience. And then over time through the contract, depending on what they want to promote to, there's certain year requirements, certain experiences that are necessary.
Okay, President Aleve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm really confused. So you have 157 authorized positions for 2024.
Correct.
In 2025, how many will you have?
164, I believe.
So you're going to go to 164 if everything.
Correct, because we're going to add one, and then we're going to add six in 25.
Okay. But what what would really be helpful is on the staffing detail, if I saw the numbers. Where do all the? I just don't, I I couldn't grasp it off of your your graph. So you're paying for some with salary savings.
Correct.
So do we have vacant? Do we have funded vacant positions?
We do. Right now, we have five vacant firefighter positions, soon to be eight. And then we have an engineer opening, and we have a deputy chief opening, and through attrition, they're going to create firefighter openings.
Would you do me a favor and just email me the staffing detail?
Sure.
By position?
You want it by position?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just like it is in the budget. It goes to staffing detail.
Absolutely.
Do you have that?
Yeah, if you'd like, I could send it to everybody.
Yeah, that'd be great. That would be.
So specifically, you want which positions are open and how they're going to be converted?
Well, it would be, yeah, it'd be nice to know, like you have 30, you have 36 funded engineers, 44 firefighters, 33 captains, three inspectors, blah, blah, blah. So with the with the projection for 2025, what will those numbers look like?
Okay, perfect.
That that's the big deal for me.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that everyone? Any more questions? All right, well, we are going to get ready to go into executive session.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-402, Perrin IV, Perrin E, Perrin I, and to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real, personal, or other property interest pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 Perrin IV Perrin A, and more fully described as follows, to receive information from PEDCO regarding potential prospects. No adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, regulation, or formal action shall occur at any executive session that is not open to the public.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against this, say nay. Okay, the ayes have it.
I'm sorry.
Is this somebody's birthday? Dad, come watch us hit this ugly piñata!
Is this somebody's birthday? Dad, come watch us hit this ugly piñata!
The time is eight ten on August nineteenth and we are adjourned.